And beat the crap out of her.
I know that property, that property behind her.
You have to drive up there tonight?
Yeah, I'm a night person, I'm a morning person.
Well, yeah, but there's, there's deers out there.
Yeah. Deer are fine, yeah.
My car's so little they just hop right over.
Oh. Yeah, you.
The town is now.
Trust me, don't get one. That's my skin going so bad. And David, who's number 16 on Hall's list to fix it. And it's in society. Yeah. It was just like. They're my favorite right now.
Well, and I think probably during hunting season when we turn up, they get stirred up and they're moving.
I don't. Because I have seen. Yeah, I agree, they sell it. I have seen more down around the sewer line at my walks in the morning now. Not more together, which they heard that more than we were.
People always ask how to spell my name.
Robert with an A?
Robert.
Why would you have to sell your horse because you can't stay here?
What did that mean?
Then you don't need the horse.
Well, I mean, it's a show horse, it's a rodeo horse, right?
I don't know.
Like a four H, yeah, I mean.
Well, no, I don't think it's four H.
Well, it's not, I mean.
It's a barrel racing.
Where, yeah.
Hopefully working for Queen someday.
Horse.
Well, that would be good. But, but several places where you get people to.
Well, you know, just across the road or you guys. I don't know who owns that property.
Um, isn't that, um, Paul Albert, Albertson, not Paul.
Lori?
Lori Rains. And the Albertson that she has.
I don't know if they still own that or if they sold that property.
No, I think Melva still owns it.
Oh, Melva owned it to start with?
Yeah, Melva owns it because.
For the Berry houses?
Okay, I didn't know if Melva owned it or if.
It's right there where they.
Her daughter.
Yeah, no, she, Melva owns it, yeah. Because it's the grandson that's living there now.
And I think the pasture that's right behind her.
That's what I think.
That's Gloria Wilson's.
The other.
Part of it.
So Gloria owns up.
I guess she owns part of it and then Caswell owns part of it.
Oh, the other way.
Yeah.
Because isn't that, is that mobile home down there Jeff Christensen used to live there?
Still does, but.
Yeah, I think he still does.
He's buried in Caswell's garden.
Yeah, that's Caswell's on that one end, but I know Gloria and Dawn, they ran their horses.
They did have horses.
Across tracks after many years.
They did when their kids were gone.
Well, if they could work a deal later.
Not after she reads the letter.
Yeah, not after she reads the letter.
Because that would have been grandfathered in there.
Yeah.
Dare they call us old folk? Only as old as you think.
Well, I, it's one month after February. So. Okay, we will call our light view work session for November 15th, 2016 to order. Um, new business, we need to discuss the nuisance ornaments, the ordinance? Yeah, ordinance pertaining to the horse that we're all aware of on within, being pastured within the town limits. So, um, they are wanting an exemption to the ordinance to continue pasturing the horse there. So, we just need to decide, would we grant that or are we not going to grant that?
I, she says she's talked to her other relatives or neighbors, but that they don't care. She's willing to get signatures. Uh, maybe we ought to have a public hearing or something or ask for letters personally from them, not from her getting them. I mean, it's one thing for them to sit down and write a letter. And it's another thing for somebody to come over and say, would you sign this for me? And they're gonna say, yeah, well, I don't want any trouble with you, I'll do it. So, we should, I, I wouldn't want a horse living next door to me and I have two great days and they're, you know, enough.
Well, okay.
But they're really well kept and it's spotless over there, so.
Right.
Well, I think if you, if you, uh, do that, then you're gonna have to, uh, you're gonna end up having everybody else wanting to have their four H animals in town and everything else and I, I don't think it's a, a good idea. I really don't.
Darrell?
So the county, you know, this is my background, right? So the county's got in the R1 zones allowance for animals. If you've got 20,000 square feet of open space to start with and then the limitations are set by over 10,000 square feet. You can have a horse or a pig or, you know, a cow or something like that. Um, but then part of that ordinance is written that, you know, it's a violation, obviously, if it's not kept in sanitary conditions and, and fencing is included and things like that. So, um, you know, the way our ordinance is written now, it doesn't allow for it. Um, to me, you know, larger lots may make sense, smaller lots, um, you know, may make sense so long as, you know, there's a process. And so to me, it seems like if they're, if we're going to allow this and we were rewriting our ordinance, because certainly not allowed as written without just ignoring the ordinance, then, then we should, you know, if agreed upon and it makes the best sense and, and works, that we could rewrite it in a way that, that there's a process which would notify Jasons and allow them the opportunity to comment too. Obviously, if they're silent, then, then they may not care about it too much. But, um, this is a tough situation, I think, currently as our ordinance is written, because it doesn't seem like it fits. But to me personally, I think that there should be allowance so long as it can meet certain standards and, and there's a process in which people have their voice to, to raise those concerns that maybe we're not aware of. And then again, a process which would look at an application and make sure that we can see that, that certain standards are being met, such as fencing and, and the way they're gonna, you know, plan to keep things clean.
Well, I do know that Jeff said yesterday that they complained about the flies over there at the city shop and stuff.
So. I, I apologize for being late, I must have missed an awful lot of the meeting because I'm already here.
We discussed.
We're rewriting the ordinance.
No. What we're really discussing, of course, is the, the problem with the horse and she's trying to get an exemption. So like, right now, even though.
There's not much that can be done right now, right?
Well, I'm asking for your opinion on it, so we have a consensus.
Doesn't look like anything can be done right now. So it looks like.
Well.
I've been by and looked at the conditions and I certainly agree with the complaint of the lady across the street who is the closest to the nuisance.
So it's not clean, not well kept up, or just small, or?
Well, you know, did you read the letters, what lady wrote?
I.
Okay, all right.
Kind of typical, that's the old couple.
I, I would just like to say that the ordinance that Darlin was talking of rewriting, I think that there are three councilors here who spent an awful lot of time along with a couple of other people in rewriting that ordinance. That was after our new charter in 2010 when we started managerial form of government and the enforcement through the managerial form of government was supposed to pursue these kind of nuisances. And the one thing that's not addressed in there that, I think, I, I grew up on a ranch and, you know, horse piss is hard to give it up and it's not addressed in there.
Well, okay. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
Um, I, you know, pretty much agree with you, but we do have an older ordinance and I don't know. We just, we found it here, which is number 18, or 428, which was from 1981, which specifically addresses.
But that was pre.
Yeah, but it does not.
The new ordinance that we spent so much time on.
Well, I know, there's two, but this does specifically address that. And it does not say in here that this ordinance was repealed.
Have you run that by the attorney?
He actually is the one that gave us that.
He found it and gave it to us. So, but, you know, and specifically what it says here on page four, offenses involving wolves. But no person shall keep any dangerous animal while or domesticated within the city and no person shall keep any bees, goats, horses, cows, swine, geese, or turkeys within the town except that the provision of this subsection will not apply to animals being transported commercially. So, and in effect, you know, there's two things, because this one addresses specifically the stamp, which is actually accurate also, because that's basically the complaint. So, you know, basically agree with you that we really should enforce our ordinance.
She has grandparents that live, have plenty of room, but I would imagine that it's a real inconvenience to take her in and out, to take care of the horse that's standing out there.
But, you know.
There are other options, I really do believe there are.
Yeah, you know, that's, that is not, um.
That's not a problem.
We can't solve the problem for them as far as the horse.
But I think there's a threat in there when it says, should we really have to sell my daughter's horse? And that kind of irritates me.
Well.
That's a threat.
Well, and I think that's two, uh, she must have just moved in that property because I think Darlin was coming in a year and a half ago, he was gonna buy it.
They had, they had lived there for approximately a year, I think.
So, okay, and they knew the rules and ordinance.
They did.
Or should have, but at least checked into those before they moved into the town of Lakeview.
Okay, so.
Real quick, just, and I, since Michael's walking in late and didn't hear some of my comments.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't meaning to rewrite the ordinance unless we agreed upon it. And, and again, only in the best interest of, of, you know, process and allowing people the opportunity to, to comment.
Yes.
Um, so, no, I was, I was just, you know, food for thought and food for thought and, and also. But we left last meeting telling her that she was in violation and according to our ordinance, there was no way around it. And so currently that horse doesn't need to be removed and our ordinance is clear on what the penalties are. And so I think there should be consensus that we do follow our laws and that, um, you know, we're aware of the situation and it's very obvious that there is a violation. And so, you know, if we direct staff to take care of it, then, then that's the course we should be taking always. I was just putting out there that if we want to make exceptions, only if people are in agreement. But in this case, if there's already someone complaining, then, then this is gonna shut the door pretty quickly.
That's where most of these come from, is the fact that someone complains. We don't go around looking for people. But it, there was a complaint made and it's been made a couple of times, more than once.
And she did bring up when she was looking at the map and, and said that she was not aware. I was with her looking at the map after the meeting the other day. And she said she was not aware that all of the zoning changes had taken place. And I assured her that that map had not changed since I had come on the council in 2008 and so.
I would think when they bought the property, they knew it was within the town limits because of, you know, water, sewer taxes and all those things that they.
She said there are horses and adjacent property to her, which there should not be. I, I don't know, I haven't seen them, but she hasn't filed a complaint yet either. So, you know, I mean, that's the only way we can know of violations throughout our community of the neighbors or those who are upset with what's going on is to file a complaint with the town and to the council and let us know what's going on and then we can look at it really.
Okay, so do we have a consensus to direct our town manager to follow through with contacting her? There will not be an exemption to this, is that?
Yeah, according to our current law. So again, I, I think, you know, you, you bring up a good point that she brought up. You know, we look at that, that zoning map and you know just that area to the west is a huge open field. And again, in an area like that, yes, it's in the town limits, is it likely ever gonna turn into a subdivision? Maybe, maybe not, but in the meantime, those people should be allowed to use their land. And that's why, yeah, they're, they're in the, they're in, you know, the town limits and under current zoning, but we don't have an ag zone and yet we know that's a field and it gets hate. And, you know, there should be an opportunity for them to, you know, put an animal or two on it, which, you know, may not be a, a bad idea for them to do. But again, that comes with a whole process that we'd have to follow beyond this meeting.
Well, I'll throw something out at you and one of which is Jake Grader threw out at me before, I guess, the meeting last week or he was asking me in regards to the town limits and if we were to annex certain areas of the community, if in fact they would have to oblige the ordinances within. And so, you know, if you change your ordinances within the town of Lakeview and then you start branching out, you can expect all types of variances that are gonna, gonna be hitting you left and right. And so I would prefer for the county to clean up the area around us and then we might look at it.
There are certain areas that annexation is not a good idea.
And you've got that over in Missouri where, you know, that area was annexed into the town and it had horses on it and there still are.
So they are.
And I don't know if.
And if they give a letter, you know, the notices go out and that's where the process begins, so.
Right, but that area out there is basically wide open, there are not houses, you know.
It's not, not that kind of residential or even rural, not all the, you know, residential. For practically, there's what, three houses left?
And, and like I was saying, once, and once you have, and I, I do know for a fact, once you have horses, unless you dig super deep to excavate all the property, you're probably never gonna have residences anywhere around property that is strictly for horses. And so, that's.
Okay.
What you can expect in the long term.
So directed?
So directed.
So directed.
So directed. Consensus.
Consensus.
All right, follow.
Okay. Um, secondly is the request for a change of our ordinance concerning zoning for medical marijuana to residential area.
Now, if they're in a residential area now?
They are in a residential area now. They want us to change the zoning so they can open a medical marijuana store in their home. It's on South 417, North H X.
641.
Or 641.
Yeah, I'm gonna buy there.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not in favor of doing that.
Well, my, my thing is you, you go up there and you zone that into a commercial, then what's gonna happen? Is a, a property value of everybody's houses?
Well, we are, because we would not be zoning it commercial, but we were changing residential to allow medical marijuana. But I, I don't think that that would be, um, something other people in the neighborhood would, would desire.
No, I drove by and looked at the property. I know I, I wouldn't like to have a dispensary into my home and I don't think people in, in Lakeview would, would oblige that either. I was on a tour at the League of Oregon Cities and toured a grow operation, Soul Sisters Grow Operation in West Salem and also a new dispensary in Salem, Salem, Kansas. And the lady has since contacted me that owns Salem, Kansas and may have been in contact with the town. I told her to do so. She's been looking at property in the community. And all I could offer her is, I mean, she's very interested in Lakeview and is certainly involved in the day-to-day operations of such a facility, very, very interested in Lakeview and looking for properties. And so, you know, she understands that state rule is pretty, you know, pretty tight as we all know. And you can go to the OLCC location on the website and, and find out how restrictive it is. And, and so I don't, you know, think that's, that we need to open it up to residential. But I think that our, our medicinal requirements that we put in effect a while back, and those were strictly medicinal. So if we do anything in regards to recreational, which it's all fixing to shift to, we might ought to look at, at setting some time, place and manner restrictions or variances that we would, would feel comfortable with. But at the same time, when we do so, I just think that the medicinal restrictions we placed were a little too broad and there is very little property, as our attorney pointed out. That property is very, very limited. And so, you know, you, you can, you can be that to a certain point. But I think the state laws are restrictive enough. And once again, I would believe that we would look at those and let them oblige anyone. And I don't think that it calls for residential, yes, there is a variance. Actually, we need to look into it, you know, if there is, we definitely need to set it.
You mean a variance in state law?
And for residential, I, you know, I think if the, if the community sets a variance themselves for residential location, it's all right, but I think that OLCC restricts it to a large degree in residential zones.
It does.
And so, I, you know, I, I don't see it as a problem. I don't think it's a place for it, but the OLCC rules are pretty restrictive. And so if someone wants to locate in our community, they have those rules to go by.
This is right in the middle of a residential area. There's some, you know, first of all, maybe nobody wants to live right next door. But you've also got traffic patterns, you've also got parking issues.
Four ways out there.
You know, you've got all kinds of things that that brings up. And frankly, you know, I, I, my, my, I would say no. I would say no. And you're right, we may have to look into it if we, if we stick with this opt-in status.
It's really kinda hard to opt out at this point.
Yeah, well, that's, I tried to tell it to somebody.
And do our community and, and so it's kinda hard to.
But, so, but I guess, is this map at all current then?
Not very.
Doesn't appear to be.
Should, would that be a priority here?
You know, there, there, yeah.
I mean, because that's gonna become a real issue.
Yes, yes.
It should, it should be updated, but at the same time, I don't think we've had that much difference in, in, you know.
So.
The industrial complex, we've had some annexations there. And Darlin, can you think of any other annexations in recent years?
Yeah, that's not even the most current map that, that town has adopted either.
No.
Yeah, see, I think.
It would hurt to get a new plot up there.
But San Red Rock Capit, it would be definitely.
Can, can we just do anything temporarily to color in areas that now are different or?
Oh, there's, there's already a map available, I think, just we'll have to have it enlarged.
Yeah, Darrell's got the.
I'm gonna check out and do that.
Okay.
The question really is the future of this ordinance, it's, it's.
Just whether or not we want it interresidential.
It's, it's whether we want this particular, you know, to give this, to change our ordinance to allow it in a residential area.
Have they, have they sent another request other than the one that we had? Was it handwritten or something or?
It, it was just a handwritten note that they wanted, and our understanding was that they would be at the meeting.
I mean, that they.
They did not appear.
I didn't know if something else had come in to town hall.
No, but I just wanted to get a discussion and so we have a consensus that, you know, if they should come back, that the town council has discussed the matter and our consensus is that we don't feel we would change our ordinance at this particular time.
I, yeah.
Okay, uh, the second thing, or third thing, excuse me. We had the gentleman here when we were talking about geothermal, the Red Rock, Mr. Fred Smith, I believe. And he was interested in getting geothermal to his home because it's very.
Not his home.
Well, a rental home then, a property he owns, put it that way. But, um, anyway, a property he owns near Head Start.
The thing, the thing that, but it's, it's a different kind of thing, isn't it? He wants to build a, a show house and show that you can get off the grid. It's gonna have geothermal, it's gonna have solar. I don't know if he ever intends anybody to really live in it, but he just wants to show that it could be done. And geothermal is the one thing he's gonna make it, yeah, it's more of a, and he's gonna use it with the kids at school that they'll be going there.
Well, I guess the question isn't what is gonna build, but the question that becomes, I guess, what, if he does and it's operational, we need some specifics on what we're going to charge him, the hookup, all this kind of thing. And so I, I think we need to put that on our agenda to get some.
More in-depth workshops.
Yeah, the cost.
And maybe Darrell would help us, I'm sure he was very involved in the development of the.
Because if we're gonna have it, have it to something in a residential area, you know, we, we need to have a rate probably a little bit more than what we charge to our institutions.
Well, and remember.
Because it's a utility that we're selling, like water, sewer, like.
As it goes by the, to the hospital and places like that, then they're teeing off that to go to Head Start. And his property is just the other side of Head Start.
I know that, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's, but it's a hookup, it's a fee, it's, uh, do we want to start that? Do we not want to start it?
Well, that's like, that's like you change your ordinances, then you open a can of worms. And if you also change the, the rules on allowing the residential to come in, then all of the places that we have the lines running all the way back to a return or even in town, people are gonna wanna hook up. And so, like you say, Sandy, we, we need those rates decided well in advance before we allow anyone to come on.
I've seen Jeff's embarrassed, he works on it a lot.
Yeah.
Verda?
What? I did mention it to Darrell today, just that we were going to discuss it. And he said that we really need to go through the school agreement and the hospital agreement before we really establish anything. And then we will be able to know if we can and, you know, then we can look at the rates, you know, at that time.
Whether we have that, that much BTO.
Right, so that's what he suggested is that we review those and with John. I think I have an appointment on Thursday with John, so that's what he suggested, so I just wanted to pass that on.
Okay, yeah, well, we, we need to know, you know, what steps to take. And like you say, how restrictive we need to be if we're not going to have enough.
Right.
Of that good old hot water running to various places.
So warm. I can hopefully bring back information at the December, for, you know, the first meeting in December. Hopefully I'll have information so I can share.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we've got other, other wells that we can pull the energy from, but that would cost an awful lot to get them up and running.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You guys make sure we can.
And that one's, you know, close to what's, where his property is.
Speaking of geothermal, are we, are we putting geothermal into Jerry Berry's property or what's, what's the? I see that remark.
Yeah, I noticed that, I didn't know what that was about.
But I hadn't, I, I thought, did I miss that?
Yeah, I, I missed it, I think, I don't know, I haven't heard anything about it.
What's the deal?
As far as pumping back into the whole spring?
No, I, well, Red, like he wants it for his use.
I can tell you what was the agreement. With Ricky, um, and Mr. Jerry Berry was, yeah, because of everything that has happened or whatever prior to my getting here. They agreed by geothermal water for Mr. Berry to his house south of town, so that his town will be like a show thing and about 24-hour notice if somebody comes to the town to wanna see unheat their house. This was a prior agreement. And so I've been working with Darrell, Jeff and John. And John had drafted an agreement prior to me getting here on this, what was promised to Mr. Berry.
That's very interesting. I've never heard anything alike in all of our negotiations with Mr. Berry and, and writing the, the agreement with Mr. Berry. So that is, that's kinda shocking to find that we have an agreement that's.
It hasn't been signed yet.
Okay, well, it's not an agreement.
Right, that was a, a proposed agreement, yeah. And so I don't believe that he's been hooked up yet.
And where is this home at?
South of town.
It's right across, it's right across from the.
From the well?
From the well.
Well, but that's out of our town limits, that's not really a showcase home for our community. I mean, that's.
No, well, the other thing is didn't, and I'm not sure where this happened, maybe you know, but we had to put back water for the Blythe property, for the, I guess it's not Blythe, it would be.
The neighboring property.
Well, yeah, it's, it's Mrs. Blythe's father.
Yeah, yeah, and we do.
And so have we put that under the road and put that back?
Oh, yes, we have.
So that, there's already a pipe there for Mr. Berry to your country.
And it goes right in front of Mr. Berry's house.
Right, yeah, okay.
And so what the agreement that we talked about was that it, he will have to loop it into his house and back into the same line that goes up to the Blythe, you know, to make sure that.
So it's a, yeah.
And then I had him put in a clause, and like I said, we haven't got anything signed or anything back, but it was to make sure that that Blythe agreement was not compromised because of Jerry Berry. And so that's in there, that if something happens and that goes down, then he would have to go off the system. have to go off the system. So, but like I said, I haven't, um, yeah.
Maybe my memory is not good, but I, I do not recall.
I, I don't either, my kind of.
I just found out about it.
Took a stink away.
A few days ago.
It doesn't stink like it used to.
Really? That is true, isn't it?
Yeah, they don't stink like it used to.
Yeah, it's a sulfur thing.
But that was, uh, Ray had told me about that, but that was an agreement he had worked out and I've got some notes that he told me about this and, uh, sorry that I, I just, I'm telling you guys all sorts of stuff you didn't know that, I thought, I didn't, it was an assumption, I'm sorry on my part, that you guys had already been in.
But, uh, thank you for updating us on that, cause, um, but that is an agreement that we would have to sign.
Absolutely, because I'm not.
Cause we certainly weren't in on the planning of that.
No, and, and like I said, any agreement I enter into, you guys have to see before it's signed, I mean, you guys, I'm gonna have a resolution that says entering into this and you guys agree to it because I'm not gonna sign it.
Yeah, blindsided all the way around.
Sorry.
I really did think you guys knew.
It was part of discussions.
Nope. So Fred Smith, are we just saying, there's so much we need to find out about that, that there's no answer at this time?
There's no answer at this time, I mean, we need to do more investigation, um, on those agreements and because it's another thing of suddenly we want, you know, fifty houses, well, and it's not gonna, we can't do that.
And Daryl's right, our first obligation is to the school and to the hospital, what we have goes to them first.
There may be something there that says we can't.
Well, they did determine there wouldn't be enough for the daycare Head Start program, but beyond that is what we need to look at.
Okay, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's another thing of, you know, if one person wants it, then people, other people wanna sign up and we, you know, where do you draw the line on who can do it and who can't, yeah, that's, if they wanna pay the money to retrofit it. Okay, so that one is, I hope. Um, the other thing we have discussion are two one-way streets. The first one was the one the school wanted, um, which is on South Fifth between H and I, going up, uh, east and west, and they've been trying to block it off and it hasn't been working, so, um, when Mr. Cahill is here, he wanted to make that street a one-way street.
Just at, at certain times of the year.
Well.
I mean, that's what he, when, when Mr. Cahill came, came to us and he requested.
That was the original one.
That was, that was the original, now he's want, that, that isn't working 'cause people are sneaking around the barricades.
Well, I hadn't, I didn't know he had come, I just heard the police chief, it's all, I haven't, I didn't know that he was.
It was, it was Travis that this is actually, is now.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't know Will Cahill would request.
No, it wasn't Will, it's Travis, um, putting in that when he is, um, in the mornings when he's looking and, and patrolling there, I couldn't think of patrolling, when he's patrolling in the mornings.
Then he gives some people a damn ticket?
And he thinks they should.
So I live on that, okay, my farmans, isn't that the street?
Yeah, right on the corner.
I've been in front of farms, so farmans now all of a sudden are on a one-way street.
No, they aren't, yeah.
No, if, if, if we make it that way, then.
Yeah, so that I'm coming back home and I can't come down this way to my house, I have to go.
What, doesn't that, no, it's just that one block.
No, but they live on it, so.
You're talking about them, when you said I.
And then there's like, well, because I'm, I'm CC right now.
Well, but their driveway is actually on the, on the.
Yeah, but still.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not saying.
I don't think you can just say it's a one-way street now, people, without, let, hand out a few tickets to those people who are sneaking around and I'll let it stop. It would be.
Once again, ordinance is enforced, make a big difference.
I, it's not a.
I don't think we agreed to it as an ordinance, did we?
No, it's not.
No, it's just kinda temporary during the school, you know, it's not, yeah, there was no one-way, you know, designation.
No, there was no one-way designation, they just put those barriers up and have a sign in front of it, which the school itself put up, not, not our.
And, and according to the school, I guess it must be working because you can bet they would've been coming to us and saying.
So they want, they want the traffic to go from west to east? Yep.
Is that how it's going?
No.
It's right now, right now, it's traveling west to east.
Yeah, west to east, if you go this way, you're not supposed to come back down this way because then you get in that whole mess.
Yeah, with the buses and all that stuff.
My, my quick opinion on this is that if we're gonna make something permanent, we have to notify the neighbors. There's gotta be a cause and let them have their, you know, data speak on the matter because.
No matter how many there are, one, two, three, four, five.
Travis said three roughly, I mean, I think there's more like five or six.
Yeah, a lot there too.
On that, on that block, there's.
There's a few houses.
Probably four houses from one quarter to the other one.
And they're also impacting the people along, uh, what is that?
The other avenues.
Because that makes people from H Street can't come down and get to their places.
Yeah, 'cause they already blocked off temporarily when they go across in front of the.
It's just right here where the sky.
I, I street.
Coming back up.
They have the network.
Although we originally agreed to it, I don't believe that we actually sent any of those people notice. The school came and we agreed to it and so they probably going through it, barricade thinking, there's not really a police or town mandated, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's just those property owners that, yeah, and, and so that's probably what.
And it's safe, it is definitely safety, so, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if it's property owners or kids, people dropping kids off and won't move.
That's either they go that way and you're, uh, temporary.
So they want their kids safe, but they wanna be able to drive where they wanna drive.
With their cell phones and their hand.
Down on my street.
That's more irritating for me than the plot.
My, my initial take would be no, to not make that a, a, a one-way street. We haven't had, uh, a request from the school itself, is that true?
Well.
Did Travis?
Apparently not, from what other people remember, I kinda thought, I haven't seen anything since I, okay, I didn't know if Travis said Mr. Cahill wanted it or not.
Travis is just, um, from what he sees when we patrol.
Okay.
So without a request from the school.
So my memory is not as good as it used to be, thirty, thirty years ago.
It's because you're an old person.
Well, spend some time, I, I think if the school liked it for certain more, I'd like to give it to the school.
Yeah.
Reach out to them.
So the consensus is now we just leave it at it.
And we're.
What's the North Twelve?
The North Twelve is.
North Twelve?
I'm, I'm kinda the one that wanted to get that, just because when you go by Don's Market, it's a little road that goes down and skirts around Tenth, Eleventh and comes out on Twelve.
But it, it doesn't come this way, it goes, is it the one that curls around back that way?
It goes right behind Jeff's.
But you go both directions.
Yeah, but it's not the one that comes past, uh, the old Stoffel Big Place, it's the one that.
No, no.
No, it's that real steep one.
It's the one when you come up to it, if you're coming on the highway.
It's pretty narrow there at the top part of it.
It's very narrow.
Cars coming up, it's a safety danger and then that upper road is just so narrow there, two cars handle by each other.
Especially when it's icy and.
Did you wanna make it one-way?
My thought was making it one-way off of the highway, going all the way down through Twelve Street.
So you can turn off of the highway onto it, but you can't come up and turn onto the highway from it, okay.
And also when you drag down it and going down Twelve Street, there's visibility concerns 'cause you can't see around the corner and you're going, both going uphill in there. There's been several accidents up there and I, I have all kinds.
I've seen people using it or going both ways, so I, I'm sure people like you say are used to their patterns and, and utilize it both ways, but if we do, once again, like Darwin said, if we're gonna change anything, we need to notify everyone in the immediate area and see what their thoughts are before we.
Like I was telling Roberta, I'm willing to go down and I'll go to all the neighbors and I'll get their opinions on it and bring that back to the council if that's what they'd like.
I think, I don't, I, Darwin's right and that's why we talked about a public hearing right from the beginning of the ordinance thing, do we need to talk to those people? You can't impact their habits, lifestyle, convenience without their thinking about it and, and agreeing to it, but it sounds to me like that's more of a dangerous, safety issue and a road that is too narrow.
Yeah, I think you guys really need to drive down it.
But I think I have, I didn't wanna go.
And I avoided, yeah.
But I think, I think rather than just having a person going around, that we need to, at least by mail.
By mail, send out notices rather than a petition or something.
Yeah, with, just asking your opinion.
You can't tell someone from who you're happening.[1754.12]